Welcome to the Fredonia Central School Board of Education meeting for February 26, 2019. And we almost begin with a pledge to the flag, so if everyone would be so kind as to stand and salute your flag up here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We really appreciate that. So, we've got a proposed agenda, and I would just want to make one correction. Under New Business, which is on the consent agenda, we have six, seven, Roman numeral seven, A, B, B, four. It's approved Sunita Fredonia students as listed for early field experience as observers with Laura Colvin back, middle school special education teacher. Would folks be okay if we just treat that as a typo and just make that change? Then that'd be great. And then, okay. And then, we do have a presentation this evening. Ms. Kretzharvey's here. Kathryn Byers here.
No.
He's not here. I apologize. That's right. However, Amy Gavazzi's here, right? Yep, Amy's here. And Sarah Lewis is here, Judith Prizabella's here, and Mr. Romans is here.
Laura Els is here.
Oh, and Laura Els is here. Sorry about that. Okay.
She's kind of hiding back there.
I apologize, Ms. Els. You weren't actually hiding. I'm sorry. I just didn't think. So, sorry about that. And then, what we'd like to do is maybe just take that up front, though, so that they don't have to wait around at all. If that would be okay with everyone? And then, okay. So, if the ad's okay, then let's just go through kind of formally, approve the agenda for the regular meeting for tonight, including the adoption of consent agenda for line items under Roman numeral six personnel, Roman numeral seven, New Business. And adoption of the consent agenda upon a motion in the second and affirmative vote approves each and every item so designated. However, prior to the adoption of the consent agenda, any board member may remove any item from the consent agenda. This item will then come up for discussion as part of the regular agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite routine matters so that the board has more time to deal with substantive matters such as what's before us this evening. So, would anyone want to pull anything out of Roman numeral six personnel? Anyone want to pull anything out of Roman numeral seven, New Business? Okay, excellent. So then, if we could have a motion to accept the agenda as presented with that typo, we'd just be moving the presentation to the front. And I think that was it. And that was Mr. Hawkins. Is there a second today? And Ms. Gagenschatz? Excellent. And so, then, all those in favor of the agenda as presented signify by saying aye. And opposed? It's adopted, then. That's great. And so, what we could do, then, is why don't we have our presentation by our press votes? It'd be wonderful.
That is not the presentation for tonight. That's actually a different presentation.
That's a good one, too, though.
That's a good one. Not the exact one for tonight.
I thought you said that for another night.
This is great. Do you think you brought yours, Ms. Kretzharvey?
Well, if I pass it to my office, yeah, I could email it.
I'm sure it's.
Okay. That's great. Get out of your way.
I have here a few.
I have.
You can all call around my phone.
That's not awkward.
I'm at 52 percent, so you better make it quick.
Basketball score update in the meantime? Basketball score update in the meantime?
I'm trying.
Down by four at halftime. And they just started the third quarter.
Okay.
What was it? We were down by four at halftime. We just started the third quarter.
That's why I'm looking at my phone and just trying to get a Twitter update on that boys' basketball game. It's not the Sabres game. That doesn't start until seven.
Okay.
Thank you. No, thank you. So, Mr. Rida had asked us to present to the board tonight on some of the updates and changes that are occurring for the guidance plan, or what we call our Student Support Services Program Plan, also known as Guidance Plan in New York State. So, there have been a number of updates that are taking place, many things that we've already been doing and been working towards updating as we've gone along, but there are a few distinct changes that will be taking place for next school year as well. So, as part of that, we kind of wanted to go through just a little bit about who we are as a department, whom our members are, what we do here at Fredonia Schools, because I think sometimes nobody really knows. We kind of hide in the background and you might not see us much. And then, talk about some of the highlights from this school year as well, other things that we've been working on, and then I'm going to toss it to the counselors to talk very specifically about what those updates are. Everybody should have an updated working draft of the guidance plan that we have been continuing to develop throughout the year, as well as our program activity mapping, and then a very nice color outline of what specific changes are taking place for next school year. So, in terms of who is part of our department, at the elementary, we have Ms. Prizabella, our school counselor, and Laura Els, our school psychologist. In the middle school, we have Amy Gavazzi and Danielle Roberts. And then, at the high school, Sarah Lewis is the counselor for A through L, and Stephen Roman is M through Z, and then I'm there as well. I'm also the instructional leader for our department. We really appreciate the addition of our school social worker this year. She has been an amazing addition for our whole school district. She is working K-12, which feels like an impossible task sometimes, but she really has been a lifesaver in helping to shore up some of the challenges that occur across building with variety of family needs and helping with home-school communication and community linkages as well. So, she wasn't able to be here tonight, unfortunately, because of a childcare issue, but she has really been an outstanding addition for our department, and we appreciate that. There are a lot of different tasks that we accomplish as a department, so we certainly support the mission and the goals and the vision of our district. In addition to that, we do a lot of work with collaboration. So, we work collaboratively with students and with the parents and guardians, with the teachers, with the district administrators, with all of our related service personnel. We do a lot with consultation across the district and within our buildings. We focus quite a bit on direct intervention. We work hard on facilitating good home-school communication and positive relationships among a variety of school community constituents. We do a lot with conflict resolution, as well as crisis intervention. We work on prevention planning with our administrators and with our teachers, and quite a bit of very direct work with our students related to academics and behavior, social-emotional initiatives, and overall well-being for our students. So, it kind of covers quite a bit there, but we really do quite a bit of behind-the-scenes work, if you will. So, I think that there's a lot of question about what is the role of a school counselor, a school psychologist, school social worker. We tried to sum it up as nicely as we could in as many words as would fit in the column for you. And really, there's a lot of overlap. So, because we have a relatively small district and a lot of student needs, we work pretty collaboratively across our roles. So, there is some overlap just by need of having to address everybody's challenges that may be presenting. Our school counselors, part of their very specific role, though, is college and career readiness and planning. So, they engage in quite a few activities related to that for our students. They're also the key responsible parties for our guidance plan or our Student Support Services Program Plan in the district. School psychologists, you know, again, there's that overlap, but we focus a lot on assisting the buildings with the data and reviewing how can we best intervene for students. We do a lot of very student-specific intervention, and we have a wide role with Special Education Services and individualized education programming as well. And then, Kat, you know, we're still figuring out what our social worker role here is, but she's doing so much work right now with mental health. I'll get into it a little bit later on in some of the highlights, but really focused on helping us better understand trauma-informed care and instruction in our classrooms. She's been doing a ton of work with helping facilitate the community linkages, the home-school coordination, especially as we're looking at families who have students across multiple building levels, where before it was challenging to be able to communicate effectively across the buildings with respect to, you know, family members, and she's really helping shore that up. She's been a great resource there. So, some of the highlights I just wanted to touch on, at the elementary, there's quite a bit going on, and Kat has had a really critical role there. She has helped, along with Laura and Judith, in establishing the safe break room and protocols for using that. She's been training our aides and faculty on how to make that effective, and that safe break room, I think, is a presentation in and of itself for you, but really, it's helping with self-regulation with our students. I think it's helping teachers understand how to help students kind of ground themselves, develop some good coping strategies, and be able to get back to the path of learning in a timely manner. There's also been a lot of work that she's been doing with trauma-informed care and instructional practices in the elementary, and I know Judith and Laura have been playing a large role with that as well. Judith has been doing a lot of focus work on groups as the needs evolve and change throughout our elementary school. She's working to adapt to that, to be able to address the needs of the students down there. Laura's been doing a lot with behavioral interventions for tier two and three behavioral needs, doing a lot with very, you know, data-focused, data-driven planning to be able to provide appropriate interventions for those students, and then working quite a bit on the multi-tiered systems of supports. And that's really a bigger team initiative than just us, certainly with administrators as well, but really working on that at the elementary level to be able to train the faculty and improve the systems of supports down there. At the middle school, there's been a huge undertaking with pride initiatives this year. Danielle and Amy have been doing a lot of work to really get that a focused undertaking, really working on the character development and the overall school culture with the FMS Pride now. They've been really dedicated and focused with that. Also, the start with Hello Week, which was a Sandy Hook initiative that really helped kind of get everybody off to a great start this school year, and doing quite a bit of work also with gratitude weeks and helping our students learn that skill of gratitude, which has been amazing. Again, Amy and Danielle both work very hard, along with Kat, this year on implementing some new counseling groups and counseling programs to address, again, the evolving needs as we see them changing throughout our buildings. And again, focusing on building some capacity for MTSS at the middle school and helping everybody kind of learn what that is this year and developing a good base for that. At the high school, Stephen and Sarah have been working very hard on really increasing the number of college and career readiness activities. They've been getting out, getting students out to a lot more colleges. We've had some really successful career days that I think the students have been loving, and they continue to evolve and grow that, which has been outstanding. I've been working on, along with Stephen and Sarah, trying to implement a better understanding of restorative practices. We have a team of teachers who is looking forward to some advanced training. I went with a couple of other teachers, and we've been working on that, and we're trying to get that as a component of our instructional practices now. So, we're looking forward to continuing to evolve that and grow it. Also, working with a ninth-grade AIS team, looking at data specific to the needs of those students to engage in some problem-solving conversation to figure out how we can improve and plan for our incoming ninth graders for next year. And then, as a team at the high school, we also continue our focused work on our pride initiatives at the high school, too, to continue to build our school culture and focus on some character education, which has been powerful. We're also starting those conversations about MTSS and what that looks like at the high school level, because it is a bit of a different situation at the upper grade levels. So, all of that work. So, now, I'm going to kind of turn it over for the very specific conversation about our guidance plan and the updates that everybody needs to be aware of with respect to that. So, I'll turn it over to Amy and Sarah and Stephen and Judith.
So, as we're taking a closer look at our plan, a lot of these components have been in place, but we're really updating it and really formalizing some of it. And this plan is for all students K through 12. They will all have access to our counseling curriculum. Program objectives really focus on attendance outcomes, achievement outcomes, and behavior outcomes. We're going to discuss some specific goals at each of our building level later in the presentation, but this is just a little bit of an overview of that. Our plan will also include all the activities and the curriculum that our students have, the goals of those, and what we're really hoping to achieve with each of those, and how we're going to collect data and evaluate, are we really getting these students what they need through this programming? And then, our plan will also look at professional development we're needing and what our plans are and how to get that, how we're evaluating the data we have, and how we're using that data to change and review our plan each year. We also look at some of the gaps in what we have and how our program can change and grow each year to make sure we're filling those and our students are getting the growth they need. And then, really assessing, do we have what we need? Is everything in place to make sure we have enough support for these positive student outcomes? And of course, you know, this is the school counseling plan, but we really work in collaboration with teachers and the rest of our team to make all this happen.
So, there we go. Why are we updating the plan? What are some of the changes you're going to see? I know everyone up front has a visual of this, hopefully in front of you or nearby, but everything in green is everything that's going to be new with the plan. You'll see that grade six is added on to be included with grade six through eight. Before, with the plan, grade six was kind of included with K through five. So, some of the stuff being done with grade six is a little more specific and different now. You'll see a key on there as well that shows kind of a few people sitting next to each other. What that means is any of those activities can be done by either a school psychologist, social worker, even a teacher, as long as it's in collaboration with the school counselor. Anything that's in blue up there has to be done by a certified and licensed school counselor at each grade level. Some of the changes you'll see up there as well for K to five, you'll see there's an addition of college and career info, and I know that already this year Judith is working on implementing a new program called Career View with her elementary students. And you'll see also up there curriculum instruction. Sarah and I have been going into the high school classes, and we are doing career plans with our students this year that we're going to continue to do every year. And then, when we meet with them one-on-one, we'll kind of do that annual progress review and go over their career plans as well. You'll also see up there something that's new is the Board of Ed will hear from us every year now, and will be giving you guys updates on our goals, and I'll get into that a little later in the timeline. And then, the one other huge change up there you'll see is the Advisory Council, which Sarah will talk about next.
So, the Advisory Council is a brand-new piece of this that we are starting to implement this school year. As you can see, there's a long list of the stakeholders and the people that are involved in this Advisory Council. This Advisory Council needs to be implemented next year. We started implementing it this school year. We've had two out of three meetings so far. We'll have a third meeting in the spring. This Advisory Council is made up of administrators, parents. Luckily for us, we have two Board of Education members who are also parents, Mrs. Fortin and Mrs. Gagenschatz. Parents, teachers, and our entire department is involved. We are hopeful that next school year we'll have a student participant as well as part of this Advisory Council, and the main purpose is to advise program goals, go over program goals, review any results that we have, basically get and give feedback from all of the different members of this Advisory Council.
So, what's the timeline look like for this plan? Pretty much since the 2017-18 school year, we have been working on updating our curriculum here at Fredonia. Currently, we do meet monthly, sometimes even more frequently, to go over some of the changes, update our goals, and we're still kind of making changes as we go along. And then, in the future, we do plan to finalize these changes by the end of July, because they do have to be implemented in September of 2019. And then, you'll see specifically in regards to the Board of Ed, we'll be presenting on outcomes to you guys, also overview of goals and any of the activities that we're doing to help meet these goals, and then we'll be presenting on some of the data we've collected, the analysis of the data we've collected. And then, going forward, just making recommendations on whether or not we can meet these needs as is, or do we need to make some changes? Do we need to change some things in our program, or do we need to maybe even advocate for more staffing in the future? We're just seeing, you know, whether or not do we have what it takes to meet these needs for our students right now, or do we have to make changes going forward in the future.
Okay. At the elementary school, we very much follow the MTSS model, and we're pretty solid into it. So, for my goals, I use my MTSS goal. I have a behavioral one and an academic one. Basically, I want to reduce the Level Two behavior problems. I said aggressive behaviors. I have the incidences there, tier two and tier three incidences, tier one or just minor ones. Might be physical violence. It could be against another person. It could be against some kids are breaking things, bullying. So, we have a whole list of things that all the teachers have of what counts as two and three. We want to reduce those to Level One, or just not have them. And by doing a skills group that I'll be doing, which would be anger management, coping skills, and problem solving that really target behaviors, we hope to reduce the incidence of that. And then, my second goal is an academic one, and I'm working with the RTI team to also reduce our Level Two, tier two needs and put them down at Tier One. And I hope to get that reduced by 25%. Currently, it's about 17%. And those moves are going to be on perseverance, which is kind of weak sometimes at our school. A lot of kids will be giving up, and also coping and organizational skills and test-taking. So, we're going to try to really target it on those things and then go from there.
So, at the middle school, our first goal is to really look at attendance, and, you know, we have quite a few students who have more than 15 missed days a year, and that can definitely hurt them academically and in their future. So, we're really looking at reducing that number by the end or comparing the two years. Currently, you know, about halfway through the year, we have about 10 students at that level right now. And we also have a behavior goal. We're really pushing our pride and giving those expectations and reinforcing that at the middle school, and we really want to try to decrease the number of discipline referrals that we have. So, currently, this time, we have about 112 referrals so far this school year. And then, our students that are failing one or more classes, we kind of changed our blue card at the middle school this year to really look at students that are failing one class and then giving them some help in those areas. So, we really want to decrease the number of students, and this is comparing at mid-year to the end of the year, and hopefully we can decrease that. Right now, at the middle school, or at the semester mark, we had about 55 students that are failing one or more classes.
We have three goals at the high school that we're looking to address. Goal number one addresses our high school ineligibility list, also known as the blue card, a little bit different from the middle school in that the high school ineligibility list is failing two classes or more. This student list is totaled up every five weeks based off of current student grades, and then Stephen and myself meet with those students that are assigned to us. We go through their report cards and then work on intervention strategies from there. For this school year so far, there are 45 students on average on each list for this year. Our goal is then to decrease those for an average next school year of about 15%, which is about six to seven students. For goal number two, we're looking to address an increase in SAT score means for high school juniors and seniors. We're currently working off of a little bit of a lag in yearly SAT score data, so we're looking at the 17, 18-year data, and we're looking to increase that mean by 10%. The mean from that year is 1114, so we're hoping that data increases by 10% for the 19, 20 school year. And goal number three is addressing the percentage of students who have 10 or more unexcused absences. So far this school year, there are around 45 students with 10 or more unexcused absences. Our goal, as you can see it, is to have this number decreased by 10%, which is around four to five students. Again, this data is still tentative, and we're looking to reevaluate it at the end of the school year and making some slight adjustments going into next year.
I think that essentially covers what we were hoping to share with you today. We're certainly open to any questions if they're ones we can answer. Great. Thank you.
You have a, why I want to say, an advisory committee of Mrs. Fortin and Mrs. Gagenschatz, or two of them. Have you ever considered putting a recent graduate?
That's definitely something that we could consider.
Who would understand some of the needs and requirements of a college atmosphere and what they would need in college?
Certainly a great suggestion. We'll give them that. Something that would be helpful.
I know that we talked about it in the committee meeting, but when we look at this data, I know schools vary widely, but do we have benchmarks when we look at those absences and, you know, the average absences for students and the failing, you know, two or more classes? Do we have anything to compare, like, how does that compare to anything that we would consider a similar school? So, you know, is a 10% reduction, is that good? You know, is that put us, you know, good relatively? Not? I mean, what would be the ultimate target? So, I'm just curious on how we might set that.
I would just say, as we talked about it at committee before, we don't necessarily have that information from other districts that is readily available to us. I would also say, every district is so different based on their unique culture and needs and reasons for performance, so that's part of the reason we're focusing our benchmark based on what is our prior year's data. So, we will have, at the end of this coming school year, the primary data that we'll be using, we'll certainly take a retroactive look at prior school years as well for that consideration, but that's primarily what we're basing our baselines off of.
Okay.
Any other questions at all? Mr. Jambrough?
Thank you.
And just one question I had relative to, then, the program outcomes for next year would be the presentation, as I understand it, right on the program outcomes?
So, every year, it's kind of, it can be different. It doesn't necessarily have to be a presentation. It could be something as simple as submitting our meeting notes from our Advisory Council or just submitting some sort of written or visual presentation to the board. We just thought for this year, it would be best to be here and kind of present on it. So, we're, I think, once we meet with the Advisory Council throughout next year, we'll kind of come up with a plan on what makes sense and what's the easiest way to kind of convey that information to everyone.
And then, timing-wise, would that be at the end of the year?
Yeah. Typically, it would be a little bit closer to the end of the school year, because we've been working throughout this year with the advisory committee to develop the plan. Mr. Rida thought mid-year might be a good time. Next year, we would certainly be open to in-person presentation if that's what the board and Mr. Surtisio desires, or if you would just like notes and call it a day, that's okay, too, whatever makes sense for the district.
I think we love seeing you.
Well, then, we'll be back.
No, it really makes such a big difference. I mean, it really does, and I'd encourage that, the advisory committee, but, you know, I mean, certainly, I know your time's very valuable and we really appreciate it. We appreciate everything you see and everything you do.
Thank you.
And you don't have to stay for anymore. Be, you know. Go. Okay. So, it takes us then to Roman numeral three. Boards reserve this time to hear comments from the audience. Those wishing to address the board are asked to stand, give their name and address, limit their attendance to five minutes or less per individual or group. Concerns and comments during this session should be directly related to items listed on the approved agenda for this meeting. Audience members seeking a response should complete a board correspondence sheet or turn that to Ms. Sligle. And then, there is an opportunity at the conclusion to speak to the board on any issue. Anyone wish to address the board on any item? Yes, please.
I am Cameron Paschal. My address is...
Do you mind? Sorry, I'm going to make it come over into my...
I'm Cameron Paschal. I live 3306 East Main Village, Dunkirk, New York. I am part of the school's GSA, Gay-Straight Alliance, which is under New Business to make a club. Our GSA mainly is for discussing...
Limit their comments to five minutes or less per individual or group. Concerns and comments during this session should be directly related to items listed on the approved agenda for this meeting. Audience members seeking a response should complete a board correspondence sheet and return that to Ms. Slagle. And then there is an opportunity at the conclusion to speak to the board on any issue. Anyone wish to address the board on any item? Yes, please.
I am Cameron Paschal. My address...
Do you mind, sorry, I'm going to make it come over into my...
I'm Cameron Paschal. I live 3306 East Main Road in Dunkirk, New York. I am part of the school's GSA, Gay-Straight Alliance, which is under new business to make a club. Our GSA mainly is for discussing LGBT rights and problems that we face here at Freedonia. And we would like for you all to vote that as a club so we can go forward and make this school a safer place for people like us.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Anyone else wish to address the board on any item? Okay, same then, I'll close that. There is an opportunity at the conclusion. And then just for, yeah, information purposes, we actually did just approve that, just so everyone's aware. It's part of the consent agenda, and so it was part of new business, and it was approved. So sorry we didn't hear from you before we went to the consent agenda, but we really do appreciate what you've had to say. Okay, excellent. Then we have minutes from our last meeting, and that's the February 12 meeting, and we bring those to the floor for consideration. Ms. Lisa Powell-Forten, and is there a second to that at all? And Mr. Forster? Okay. Any additions, corrections? Are none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And opposed, those are approved. And then that takes us to Roman numeral five on the financial treasures report. And first is our review of our budget status report for January. Mr. Forbes, anything there that you would want to identify?
On that report, no.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding that at all? Then revenue status report, Mr. Forbes.
Yeah, just briefly, I'll go through a couple of highlights from the January report. Again, we're giving the multiple looks to try to help show a better picture of how the revenue's coming in. I want to point out that we did receive about $12,000 in non-resident tuition in the month of January. That's because we typically send bills out late December to remind people when they also have contract dates that they do. We also received about $10,000 of scheduled rental payments. About two-thirds of the way down the page, under, I'm looking at the revenue status report under Code 2703, we did receive $13,000 from the county. That is for reimbursement of our CPSE administrative costs. Each year, the state gives us a calculation of what we can build in the county and up to the school to bill it, so we received that. And then finally, under 3102 lottery aid, we did receive our supplemental VLT payment of $77,000.
Does anybody have any questions about the revenue status report?
You're two-thirds of the way through. I think you're going to hit the thirty-one.
Oh, there's a couple of big tickets yet. All your major state aid doesn't come in until March and April. You feel comfortable. Okay. It's all in there. Thank you.
So any other questions at all? Okay, good enough. That's great. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Forbes, on that. And then we have the treasures report for January. We need to bring that to the floor for consideration. Ms. Gagin-Schatz, and is there a second to that? Ms. Powell-Forten? And Mr. Forbes, anything you want to share relative to that?
Nothing on that report.
Anybody have any questions or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And opposed, that's approved. And that takes us to draft number one of our budget, Mr. Jones. Did you notice the colors in the last presentation? No red!
I do have to point out in the front, thank you to Ms. Slagle for jazzing up the presentation. Some didn't like the black and white look, and she took that for me. Do you want to point out to the board that you received two documents at the end of last week, which I'll be updating for each board being moving forward during the process. The first was a line-by-line review, going back to 2014, 15, showing budget versus expenditure all the way through to the 2019, '20 proposed budget. And that column in the 18, '19 budget final will adjust as we make final estimates on the expenses for this current year. We also received a proposed budget document, which is instead of group line-by-lines, grouped by category, salaries, benefits, contractual expense, materials, supplies, textbooks, debt service, and then also a piece on the revenue at the end, just so you have a little different look at the same information. So having done that, we decided to go with a little bit more of a summary review tonight. And we've whittled down the presentation from what you typically see at this time of the year of around 30 to 35 slides to about 16 slides today. Do want to point out that one of the desires of the board was to try to have this not be as long a process and to get kind of towards the end of it a little quicker. So taking a look at this review, you're probably several weeks ahead of where we would normally be in the process of presenting to the board. And this is something that you typically would see more towards the middle or the end of March than late February. So just wanted to point that out. So in this budget document, there still remains some unknowns. Our final employee benefits is not settled. It's dependent on contracts that are being negotiated. We have the CSEA, which are our aides and cafeteria workers, and the Freedonia Administrators Association, which is all the district administrators except for Mr. Surtisio, myself. Those are coming up. Their contracts expire at the end of the year. We're also continuing to work with our building administrators on final staffing, which is not reflected in this budget draft. We have had ongoing conversations about that. We just don't have the final decisions yet. Also, the tax cap calculation should be final by about the middle of March. It's essentially final now, but there is a little bit of tweaking that's going to go on related to some lease payments, be very minor adjustments. BOSI's final cost, we're hoping to have those settled by April 15th, primarily in the area of alternative education and special education. Those continue to flux. There were changes made based upon the report I received from BOSI's today. So that's not a usual part of the process. Also, we're waiting for the final state aid runs, which hopefully, if the state budget's on time, it'll be by April 1st. Taking a look then, salary benefits, and again, this does not reflect any final staffing numbers. This is as it looks today. We have total salary benefits at 0.94%. You can see the distribution between instructional, non-instructional, and benefits. I will point out that the non-instructional is the actual decrease based...